Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow, Mr. Osterling, Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Ms. Garipean.
Now, the Vice President and Clerk are not here. Do we have any public speaker cards? No. Okay, we have a closed, let's see, closed session. Government Code Section 54956.9A, Conference with Legal Counsel, and Government Code Section 54957, Evaluation of Employee. Do we have any public comment on those items? Hearing none, we adjourn to closed session. The first 2017 regular business meeting of the Pasadena Area Community College District will come to order. I have the following to report from the closed session. In closed session, the Board, by a vote of six to zero, with one Board member absent, took action to approve the settlement agreement in the matter of Jennifer Cooper versus Pasadena Area Community College District et al., case BC582795, per Government Code 59 -- excuse We will now have roll call.
Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow, Mr. Osterling.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Ms. Garipean.
Here.
Mr. Martin, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would love to do that. You'll join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Are there any requests for reordering of the agenda items? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, excuse me, advisory vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Introductions and recognitions. We have none this evening. Public comment on non-agenda items, do we have any speaker cards?
I don't have any speaker cards in front of me, Mary. Where's our good friend Martin?
What?
Oh. What?
Approval of minutes for February 1, 2017.
To move.
Second. Advisory vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous with Trustee Fellow absent. Consent items. Approval of S, I, and B consent items. Are there any items which any trustees would like taken off the consent calendar and discussed individually?
Why are they -- those are live, mine is blank.
I had a consent calendar item, I'm not sure if it's in this category or not. B category, thank you.
It is E9.
I hope it's going to work.
B9, thank you.
Okay, and then the B, I can, let me give you the exact number of it. It's B9 ratified, it's B170091.
Correct, that's the one I'd like to take off the consent calendar so we could discuss.
Are there any other items that trustees would like discussed individually? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent items S, I, and B with the exception of the item just mentioned?
Move to approve.
Second.
Advisory vote?
Aye.
Trustees? Six to zero with Trustee Fellow absent. Trustee Osterling, you had a question about?
Yes, thank you. So, item B9 and specifically B170091 is a contract with Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Metro, and this is referred to as the U-Pass. And we're being asked to increase a -- approve a budget increase from no cost to $100,000. And I thought it would be beneficial for all of the trustees, myself included, if we could get somebody in the administration to give us an overview of this program and how it works and leading up to what caused the cost to go from zero to $100,000.
I will provide you with that update, Ryan, our Trustee Osterling, and also for the benefit of all the trustees, and then I will ask Dean Rebecca Cobb to make any additions to that. As you know, Pasadena City College, on an annual basis, does provide our students with an opportunity to purchase Metro passes at a reduced cost. We are billed twice a year because we purchase them for the fall semester, and then we purchase them for the spring semester. This is an agreement that not only PCC but also many other college districts, including four-year colleges, have with the Metro Corporation. This past fall, we were selling those cards, those U-Passes, for a period of 21 weeks. Let me explain why 21 weeks, because we have our regular semester of 16 weeks, and we added to that the winter weeks, so it came to 21 weeks. The cost of the passes would vary based on the number of weeks that the students can use those passes. At PCC, we allow students with six units and above to purchase the pass. We sell the passes to the students for $95. In this fall, this past fall, the passes cost us $215 because they were for 21 weeks. So, to a certain extent, we are subsidizing those passes to the tune of $120. That was for the fall semester, that also included the five weeks of winter, which ended two Fridays ago. Metro would bill the college for the full amount, for the amount of the passes, all right? The college was billed $434,000. The college had made provision to pay out of non-college funds. That's why it says no cost, it was non-college funds, right, which would not require Board approval. For $334,000--
Just interrupt with a question, if it wasn't coming out of college funds, what funds would it come out of?
It would be coming out of auxiliary funds that are under the control of student government.
Okay.
What happened this time was, when we received the bill for $434,000, the college had anticipated that Metro would review the rides and would credit us with the balance of unused rides. But because it, the program ended only two Fridays ago, Metro has not had the time to do so. We will be hearing from Metro in two weeks or so, that's when we're going to get the credit. So, Metro this time wanted us to pay the full amount, when they invoiced us at the end of January. So, when the invoice came for $434, we were expecting to get an invoice for about $334,000 or so, in which case we would not be borrowing funds. But because they did not have time to do the credit back to us, because the program ended only two Fridays ago, because that's when our winter session ended, we are waiting now to get that. So, in the meantime, Metro wanted us to pay the full amount, and then they would credit us. So, what we are doing right now, we are borrowing that money from the student equity funds. Student equity, we've checked with the state, allows us to do that because it provides some kind of support to students that are disadvantaged, that would need those rides to come to school. Now, in the spring semester, we will be getting credit back now. In the spring semester, the, we are going to have them for only 16 weeks, because it's not going to be 21 weeks. And in the spring semester, that will cost us only $170, and we will continue selling for $95, which means that we're subsidizing spring for only $95 per U-Pass sold. Now, in the spring semester, we would be able to apply the credit that we get towards that payment, and then also in the spring semester, because we will have collected by then, by the time we receive the invoice, we will have collected the additional activity fees and so on. Even if we have to pay the full amount before we get the credit, we will not be asking to borrow any amount of money to pay the balance. Does that--
So, let me follow up the question. So, we're being asked to approve a budget item for $100,000, but if I understood you correctly, you're actually just asking to borrow $100,000 from the college and it'll be repaid?
It will be repaid.
Okay.
However, there's always the caveat, that if, for example, we have used those cards for many more rides than had been expected--
If we don't get the planned credit.
Then in that case, there would be not, the credit might be less. But history has shown us that that credit would be fine, okay? And where the money's coming from, that's also not college funds, that's categorical funds, okay? That's not the 01 fund.
So, they charge us the, they have, Metro has a college student rate.
That's $215 for the 21 weeks.
Yeah. And then we subsidize, we, the student government--
Yes, subsidize the difference.
Subsidizes the difference.
Now, some colleges, for example, if you take the case of Allee Trade Tech, they don't subsidize anything. They make the students pay the full amount, others--
Of the Metro college student rate.
Right. I think Rio Honda is about $120 or so, correct me if I'm wrong, $120, Rio Honda. Each college decides on how they're going to subsidize that.
And then the credits, what they do is they look at the full amount collected, which is the $215, and then they look at the actual rides taken by those students, and if they didn't use the full amount of that at the 215, the full level, there's a credit.
You get a credit, yes.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay.
I hope this answers your question.
Yeah.
If it does not, I mean, I have Dean Rebecca Cobb will be able to provide additional answers if you have more questions.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a clarification, I looked at the MTA.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
So, I'm really glad that Trustee Osterling flagged this, I actually missed it. And so, this transit pass issue has been in discussion with the, I guess, the Policy Committee for some time with the students. So, one of the things I think that we ask for is more a full accounting of the transit, and then what our break-even point is, so that we could look at how we better serve our students, because by these transit passes going up, the per-cost price of the, it's almost doubled, I guess, from what they were paying previously, and it really reduced the amount of usage for our students. So, when we get down to the last item where we add something to the agenda, I guess I would like to ask again that we have this report and that, and that we meet with one of the new supervisors who, to maybe familiarize them with what's happening. So, we have Supervisor Barger in our area, I've met with her field deputy, I've made that, I've made that interest in a meeting known to them when I was in a legislative meeting with them, and so they're willing to meet with us. So, I hope that we can really do this, because I think it's something that really affects the access of education for our students.
We have asked those questions, and Metro has promised us that we will receive an answer from them, and we are waiting for that answer, and we probably will be getting that answer the next several weeks. And once we get those answers, we will share them with the Board, and then we will take further action based on that.
So, thank you, Dr. Verdi. So, may I ask that if we don't, maybe we set a timeline on that, because it seems like we have been waiting for quite a while, and if we don't get it within a certain period of time, that we go ahead and have the meeting with Supervisor Barger?
We have asked for the fall semester, so we're going to put a timeline on that and make sure that we--
Thank you.
Trustee Osterling?
Just a quick follow-up on Trustee Wa. So, we had talked about this before, and if we are generating a credit based on actual usage for the unused rides, that means that they actually have details of our students' actual ridership amounts and dates and times. And we would request that data. I assume they're giving us that data in order to figure out the credit. And the purpose for getting that data is, I think, that one of the things we'd like to approach Metro with is the fact that I'm betting that most of our students are non-peak riders, and the Metro's philosophy is they want to be revenue-neutral, which I understand. But I think what we'll find is most of our ridership is off-peak, non-rush hour, and the incremental cost to Metro of that off-peak rider is somewhere around $0.
We have asked those questions.
Yeah, good.
The same question you've asked, and we are expecting an answer. Then we will provide you the data, and we will also do an analysis, and we'll give you the data as well, so that you can also look at the data that we're receiving and draw that conclusion.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I need to apologize, I forgot to ask for a public comment before we started to discuss this. Do we have a speaker?
No, this is Dean Cobb who answered the question.
Do you have any other questions about the program itself?
Okay, okay. Yeah, I've got a question now. The $434,000 that you mentioned, is that the $215 times the number of students?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
But the MTA actually tracks the number of rides that a student takes?
Yes, it does.
And then suppose the student is, you know, going all over the place, you know, they've got six units, so they're, they've got a lot of spare time presumably.
Right.
And if they're running up a whole bunch of rides, are we charged for some amount above the 215, or is it 215 basically a pass?
So, the maximum number of rides we're charged per student is 57 per month.
Ah, and so--
So, anything above that is free, we don't get charged anything above the 57 rides. Boards, I should say, not rides, they don't call them rides, they call them boardings.
Okay, so, to the extent they don't, to the extent a student buys a pass and takes less than 57 rides in a month, we get a credit for those rides?
Yes, we will.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, I know this is an important issue for the students.
Thank you, Dean Cobb.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve that item.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Trustees? Vote is six to zero with Trustee Fellow absent.
That was part of the consent, yeah, okay.
Okay, approval of modifications and deletions to the credit.
We still have to do consent item P. It's the lighting.
We just, oh, wait a minute. Oh, we didn't get P?
This one, P, consent item.
Oh, that was through B, yes. Okay, consent items P, personnel. Do any trustees want to pull out individual consent items? Trustee Martin?
I just want to do a shout-out to Nikki Harmon for her tremendous career here and being our leader during the recreation of the Child Development Center and everything she's done, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Move to approve consent items P. Can we do them all at once?
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
No advisory.
No advisory.
Personnel, okay. Trustees? Motion passes six to zero with Trustee Fellow absent. Item H1, Approval of Modifications and Deletions to the Credit Curriculum.
This item is mostly for the, if you want the change in the numbering of the curriculum, because we have to change the, how do you call that, Dr. Junie, the lettering from three letters to four letters?
That's correct, this is really to fit with Banner System, which it requires a certain numbering process, and so that's mostly what the changes to the numbers are. And then the additional aspect of it were a list of deletions of courses, of which I did provide more information on, but I'm happy to answer any other questions about that if the Board would like.
I'd like to move approval, but I just want to note that in the last response that you gave to us, there were a few corrections.
Oh, yes, thank you for calling that out.
And so, I'd like to approve the last draft that you sent us with those corrections.
Right, so there are, I believe there were three courses that we actually want removed from that list, because they are actually still in the catalog, and we don't want to delete them.
So, removing them from the removal list?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
That was the motion.
On second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I want to appreciate the team, you know, to put it in context for a trustee, the one thing I want to know is, is it a renumber, is the same thing being taught someplace else, or is there an actual program or some element that's not being taught anymore? So, when we got the revision, I thought you did a very nice job of describing that, and that gave me a context that I needed, so I want to thank you for that.
And if I may, you, the Board will see a lot more of this sort of item coming forward. We are in the process of doing a curriculum cleanup, where we are basically syncing what's in the inventory with what's in the catalog, and there are a number of corrections that will be moving forward in that regard, basically to make the, our catalog, our, what we refer to as the PPA, which is the Financial Aid, a list that students can get, qualify for financial aid for various programs, our gainful employment, and the state inventory, all to be in compliance. And there's a number of those changes that you'll see coming forward as we move on those. Some of those take longer than others, that's why you're not seeing it all in one package, because some of them require the State Chancellor's Office, basically, to act on certain ones of those. And so, you'll be seeing more and more of these in months to come.
I suspected that, and that's why I wanted to make sure I complimented you for the way you did it the second time, so that when it comes again, you'll be in a similar format, and I'm confident it will.
Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Advisory vote is yes, trustees vote six to zero with Trustee Fellow absent. Opening the public hearing regarding the initial sunshine proposal for negotiations for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020, academic year from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 777, to the Pasadena Area Community College District. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, the hearing is closed. H3, Receive the initial sunshine proposal for negotiations for the successor agreement for 2017, 2020, from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 777, to the Pasadena Area Community College District.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Advisory vote is yes, trustees vote six to zero with, in favor with Trustee Fellow Classified Employee of the Year nomination, Dr. Verdi.
Over the years, CCLC, the Community College League of California, on an annual basis would ask colleges to submit the name of a classified employee that would be considered at the statewide level as Classified Employee of the Year. The past several years, excluding the past two years, the college had submitted names from CSEA and CFT. And this year, we have, on a rotation basis, we're going to submit a name from a confidential employee. And we have asked from staff and some other employees to nominate somebody, and we would like for that name to remain, I guess--
Confidential.
--secret, confidential, until we hear from CCLC. And therefore, we would appreciate it if you would authorize the Board of Trustees under the chairmanship, the presidency of Dr. Ross Selvage, to allow us to submit this name.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Trustees? Advisory vote is yes, trustees vote six to zero, in favor with Trustee Fellow absent. Thank you, Dr. Verdi. Superintendent President's Report. Superintendent President's Report.
Thank you, Trustee Selvage. I would like to start this, my report with a very sad piece of news. As you know, Albert Hernandez, an accounting technician in our fiscal services, suddenly passed away last Friday. Albert was well-liked by his fellow employees, he's been with us for two-plus years now and did a marvelous job in fiscal services. And it is really sad for us to lose an employee in the prime of life at this time of the year. Funeral services are on Saturday, March 11th at 12:45, and we will be sharing more information with everybody. This is the first board meeting since we received the good news from the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. As you know, the college status, the college accreditation has been fully reaffirmed. And once more, I would like to extend my warmest thanks to the college faculty, staff, management, administration, for the work that they've done under the leadership of Dr. Kathy Scott, our accreditation liaison officer, and Ms. Lenora Rogax, who was the faculty rep. And we do feel very proud of the work that we have done to have this cloud of probation lifted from the college. The spring term is well underway, campus is buzzing, and our classrooms are full with faculty members present on campus and students filling our classes. We are currently at 94% capacity, and we are on track to meet our full-time equivalent student target for this year. I would thank to Dr. Junie and the deans, Dr. Olivoe and the student services staff for the work that they have done to make this a success. As you know, when we generate more FTES than our base, we do collect the money for growth. But if we grow more than that, and there is money available at the state level because other colleges have not grown, that money is distributed amongst the colleges that have grown. Last year, because we were over our base and over the growth by about 300 FTES or so, we were able to get an additional $1.6 million. That's money that was left out there and that we collected because we grew while other colleges did not. And I want to thank the faculty, I want to thank our staff for the work that they've been doing to have additional students in the classroom so that we could do that. And I'm hoping that this year, we will be able to grow slightly above the base and the growth target as set by the state. Cultural life at PCC is no secret, and this fall, this, I mean this spring, features two special exhibits in our fine art galleries. In Gallery 5, there is a three-person show from Lynn Aldrich, Miyoshi Baroche, and Doug Harvey. And starting this Friday, we will host a solo show by Tim Hawkinson in the Boone Family Art Gallery in the Center for the Arts. I encourage all of you to attend these fantastic art exhibitions. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM, in this very room, we will be hosting novelist Viet Thanh Nguyen as part of Pasadena's One City, One Story event. Mr. Nguyen will discuss and read from his novel, The Sympathizer, which won the Pulitzer Prize for Fiction last year, a feat even more remarkable for the fact that it was Mr. Nguyen's first novel. The event will run from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM, and all are welcome. We also received news from the county office of registrar of elections that they have accepted our election date change from November to June of even years. Congratulations to all of our trustees, you all will have an extension of six months on your current term. And our very own attorney, Mr. Warren Kinsler, will be coming to the next meeting and will be addressing the board on the resolution that we need, that you need to vote on to establish the start date of terms for all those of you who will be elected at the June election. And as you know, next week, I will be chairing the accreditation visit of Merced College, and I'm, I think trustee Wow is chairing, is not chairing, but is on a team going to West Hills College?
Yes.
Right? And on my team, I will be accompanied by Dr. Stordi and our very own Crystal Colrose, who is our team assistant. And I must say that this will be the second time that Crystal is the assistant on my team, and she's the best assistant I have ever had. Of all the times I've chaired, Crystal is the best assistant I've had. And this concludes my report, thank you.
Announcement by shared governance representatives. Student.
Good evening to the board. First, I'd like to say that we have some fellow Associated Students over here on their own volition, they are at a board of trustees meeting.
Thank you for coming.
How precocious they are. And then I would also like to say, it is very much appreciated the U-Pass consent item that that was passed. Again, as trustee Osterling mentioned, it is more of a safety measure, and we are hoping to just borrow that, those funds, but it does mean a lot for our students and to ensure that we have that in place, so we appreciate that. And lastly, I would say, we are working on our Associated Students Annual Student Survey, and Crystal doesn't know about that yet, but she surely will, which we will be distributing throughout the campus on issues, everything from metro to textbook costs, so that will be on the horizon very shortly. And that will conclude my reports.
Could I ask, President Russo, will, will those results be made public, I guess to your AS, to those trustees?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Management?
Can I remark to the students? This is a very short meeting. Don't get, don't get used to it.
They are, they're usually much more exciting.
We'd like to note the, the recent announcement of retirements of two of the members of the PCC Management Association, Dean Amy Olmer and Nikki Harmon, whom you just referred to, both of whom have had a long and, I think, an arguably distinguished career here at PCC. Traditionally, there has been a breakfast to honor the retirees of the Management Association, but we decided this year, the young rebels that we are, to shake that up a little bit and to schedule a late afternoon, early evening event. We'll be replacing the coffee and the orange juice with something a little bit more adult. And we're also planning, we've been kind of perpetually planning our retreat, and at some point, we'll come up with the info on that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Academic Senate?
Good evening. Well, my, my report is going to primarily consist of a resolution that we just passed in Senate. Kathy Kataris, Dr. Cecilia Medina Adamo, and Chris Pilon worked on a resolution regarding a safe learning environment for our students in response to all of the political issues that are going on with our undocumented students and the unsafe environment or the, the safety issues that they feel. This was passed on Monday, and I've been asked to read it to everybody. It is a bit long, and I apologize in advance. I'm a teacher, and I know how difficult it is to hear something so long and actually take it in, but yeah, so, here I go. So this is the Academic Senate Resolution Regarding a Safe Learning Environment. Whereas Pasadena City College welcomes and supports students without regard to their citizenship or immigration status, and will continue to admit students in a manner that complies with our non-discrimination policy and without regard to a student's race, national origin, religion, citizenship, or any of the other protected characteristic, Pasadena City College is committed to providing an environment in which all admitted students can pursue their studies and careers and graduate successfully. Whereas the PCC mission states that the college is committed to providing access to higher education for members of the diverse communities within the district service area and to offering courses, programs, and other activities to enhance the economic conditions and the quality of life in these communities. Whereas a core value of PCC is an appreciation for diversity, and that we recognize that a diverse community of learners enriches our educational environment. Whereas the first prong of PCC's strategic plan is student success, equity, and access, which includes working with community partners to determine the unique needs of those individuals underrepresented in higher education and seek to develop means to increase. Whereas each semester, PCC serves over 30,000 students, including international students from over 90 different countries. Whereas PCC is a minority-serving institution that provides educational resources and resources to potentially impact marginalized populations, over 85% of our students are racial or ethnic minorities. Whereas the PCC Safe Zones Initiative aims to create a safe campus community through cultural competence, which is integral to a successful academic experience, and works to train allies who are individuals within the PCC community who consider themselves to be knowledgeable about the needs of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning and/or undocumented people, and is working to expand this training for the benefit of all students. Whereas PCC is located in the city of Pasadena, which in 2013 approved a legislative policy calling for, quote, humane and comprehensive immigration reform, protecting families, making citizenship attainable, and not mandating enforcement on local police. And PCC aims to embody the ideals of its city. Our students, whereas our students are expressing heightened fear and worry for themselves and their friends, family, and communities, and we are entering a period of chance and uncertainty in which the specific details of the impacts of our communities is not yet clear, only adds to the anxiety that our students are experiencing. Whereas on November 30, 2016, the Associated Students passed a resolution in support of providing a safe environment for students in distress on campus in direct response to this heightened fear and worry, and the faculty has an obligation to support this resolution and the student body at large. Whereas students on campuses across the US are looking to their faculty, staff, and administrators for reassurance. As hate crimes and overt acts of racism continue to occur, many students are worried that their values and identities are coming increasingly under attack. Whereas federal law protects student privacy rights, and the California State Constitution and other statutes provide broad privacy protections to all students, faculty, staff, and other employees of PCC. Therefore, in accordance with the California Chancellor's Office guidelines and our own principles of justice and fairness, the Pasadena City College Academic Senate resolves and reaffirms the following. The Academic Senate resolves that Pasadena Community College will remain open to all students who meet the minimum requirements for admission regardless of immigration status. The Academic Senate resolves that faculty shall treat all students equitably in the receipt of all school services for which they are eligible. The Academic Senate resolves that the college should not release any personally identifiable student information, including any data related to immigration status, without a judicial warrant, subpoena, or court order unless authorized by the student or required by law. The Academic Senate resolves that the Pasadena City College should not cooperate with any federal effort to create a registry of individuals based on any protected characteristics such as religion, national origin, race, or sexual orientation. The Academic Senate resolves that we will continue to advocate for educational opportunities for all students in the community college system regardless of immigration status at the state and federal level. The Academic Senate resolves that any request by immigration agents for information regarding a student shall be initially denied and immediately forwarded to the president and general counsel, who will review the denial according to the following guidelines, in keeping with the individual's right to privacy. No part of a student's education record, however created, may be divulged with personally identifiable information to any person, organization, or agency in any matter unless there is: (1) informed written consent by the student, if the student is 18 years of age or older, or otherwise, by the parent or guardian; (2) a valid court order or judicial warrant requesting such information, such cases prior to complying with such court order or judicial warrant the student; if the student is 18 years of age or older, otherwise the parent or guardian shall be notified immediately in writing of the information that is a subject to the court order or judicial warrant; (3) a health and safety emergency and disclosure of personally identifiable information from an education record to appropriate parties is necessary to protect the health or safety of the student or other individuals; (4) another reason to do so that is required by law. Questions concerning the validity of a court order or judicial warrant, or whether there is a health and safety emergency or other possible reasons for releasing educational records that contain personable, identifiable information, should be directed to the college president and general counsel. The Academic Senate resolves that we will teach students to become leaders and work with faculty to give them tools that will enhance their ability as teachers and ensure their classrooms are affirming to all students regardless of race, sexual identity, or background. So I just want to say that already our Safe Zones coordinator, Cecilia Adamo, Medina Adamo, has interacted with a student and has told her about this, and her, her student, who is undocumented, has felt safer knowing that the faculty have passed this resolution or in support of them. And in addition, the students and the faculty union support this resolution, and I'm here to encourage the board of trustees to create a similar version of a resolution to be approved at the next board meeting. This will be an important act of solidarity and with the campus and demonstrate your support for all of our students, so, thank you for your patience in listening to that. Thanks.
Thank you very much, that's a very important matter. PCC currently is, operates fully consistently with all of these suggestions, and Dr. Verdiyan has done an excellent job of informing the entire campus community, faculty, staff, students, everyone, at points in time when concerns have arisen. So I want to congratulate and thank Dr. Verdiyan for keeping on top of this and keeping the whole community informed about what we can do here at PCC and the programs we have in place.
Yes, we, we do appreciate that, thank you, but a resolution would also be really important, too.
Trustees, could I ask, could you send us a copy, electronic copy?
Certainly.
Mary, what's the procedure for this being entered as a matter of the record?
Well, just add it into the minutes.
Sure, thank, thank you. So the, let the record show, which means it will be in the minutes. Thank you. Trustees, oh, excuse me, shared governance, if you don't want to, okay, student trustee.
So I want to start off by thanking Dr. Foster, the Academic Senate, and the Safe Zones Coalition for all that they've done. I feel like that was, that was very strong and moving, and I'm really proud to be here as a student and hear what you have to say, and know that we do have people supporting us, right? As students, we do, we did make our own resolution, but it's great to know that other campus groups also, also support us and also agree, agree with us. And I think a climate like that is what makes PCC the successful college it has grown to become, so I'm very thankful for you being here and you giving that very moving resolution. And I do agree that the trustee should also consider a resolution, although a resolution isn't really an action, it does show that we are in support, and if we could do more, we would. But although I know that we have specific regulations from the, from the law that we know that we can't really act on it, but a resolution does help in just helping students and making it, making students feel more comfortable. Also, the U-Pass, we know that is, it is pretty extensive, but as students, we are constantly fighting that, we're constantly looking to not renegotiate, but make that less stressful for students, and kind of also publicize why this cost is so high. I know that's something that we've really been trying to do as Associated Students to make students understand that, you know, we have been trying our best to reduce this cost, and it's really great to know that we have the support of the trustees and that we all, as a whole, know that we can get a lower cost and we should be fighting towards that. In addition, on April 5, there is going to be a joint meeting with the Associated Students, so we are really looking forward to that. President Russo and I will be getting together to combine an, an agenda where the Associated Students will speak about the issues that we found to be most important this semester and that we hope the future Associated Students Board would also continue fighting for. And that is all, thank you.
Trustees, do you have any announcements, comments to make?
I do.
Trustee Brown?
Thank you. So I did attend one meeting on February the 8th, I joined Dr. Bell over at John Muir High School. I joined Dr. Bell over at John Muir High School for a joint information town hall meeting, which was quite informative. The turnout was not as big as I was hoping for, but the information was certainly well-received by the attendees about workforce certificate programs and what we are intending to offer over in the northwest Pasadena. I expect, according to what was articulated, that we'll be having a few more of these town hall meetings to educate and engage the community so they could see what PCC Northwest is all about. Thank you.
Trustee Hoyt.
Hilsman. Yes, sir. I wanted to just say that the Pasadena City Foundation, to which I'm the liaison for the board, has been very active and has an ambitious and vigorous capital campaign that they've begun. We've had meetings on marketing with Alex Buckelheid and some of his team. So we're excited that we'll continue to raise some money for the college, but also to deploy funds that will really impact students' lives. That's really our goal on the foundation. And I also am very happy to see that we'll be adjourning this meeting in memory of Shirley Burt, who I only knew briefly, but really had an impact, I think, on all of our lives at PCC. Right up until the end, she was a vigorous, dynamic personality around the college, on the foundation, and elsewhere. And I can tell you personally, she'll really be missed.
Yes.
Trustee Jim Osterlein.
I want to make sure that Joe Futter keeps the promise he just made to our Associated Students, so I'll be brief. For a short meeting. I wanted to commend Superintendent Verdi, Dr. Stordi, and their staff. At the last audit and budget meeting I attended, we had the most well-presented, clear-cut budget and five-year projection that I've seen, and I can't tell you how helpful that is for us to really have a document like that and have it well-prepared and easy to understand to help us make the important decisions that we have to make as a trustee. So thank you. I wanted to echo Hoyt's sentiments for Shirley Burt. I was approached a while back after she passed away by past president of the foundation, Mel Kohn, and asked if we could honor her at a meeting. And thank you to Superintendent Verdi and Board Chair Selvage that we can adjourn the meeting in her honor, and I believe Bobby Abram is going to do the honors. Thank you.
Trustee Martin.
I will share Trustee Osterlein's commendation to Dr. Verdi and Dr. Stordi for the budget and audit meeting. In addition to a very good presentation on the next five years, we are working on things that we can control, where we can come up with extra revenue to benefit the college. And I'm appreciative that we're on top of some of those things and plans are moving forward and want to let the other trustees know that are part of that committee, that those things are in the works. And congratulations to Chedva on your official new position. Think that the limited contact I've had with her at budget and audit and up in Sacramento, I think we got a real winner here, so this is well-deserved, and I'm very proud of you and appreciative that you applied and are taking that on, at least as an interim position.
Trustee Warren.
So I want to thank Vice President Olivo and her staff, Dr. Quan Chow, and Tameek Alexander, and also Alex Buckelheid for a very successful API symposium for the students on Saturday. I think we had well over 150 students and parents attend to learn about the pathways in getting into PCC. So it's always a good event, but it's, can't do it without having great support from the staff, so thank you. And I also wanted to report on the D.C. meeting, and really to thank Alex Buckelheid, who really just herded six colleges together. Everyone was amazed that he could keep track of all the meetings and get us all into the meetings. But this year, because we didn't have specific agendas, there's so much up in the air in Washington, we decided to go, just informally, as a coalition of colleges. And so we were joined by Glendale, Citrus, Mount SAC, Ventura, and L.A., and so their trustees and students came with us. It was sad to not have our students there. I know you guys were all taking finals, but I want you to know that the students from Mount SAC and from Citrus represented you well and represented the issues quite well. So we talked to our representatives about the Pell Grant funding and ensuring that we have sufficient funding for education access for our students. Of course, the DACA issues were huge for everyone, and the veterans' issues. And Ventura represented us mostly on the veterans' issues. And one of the things that we heard is that our veterans' groups, including our own PCC veterans' groups, were up in Sacramento, and we think that we're going to get funding, I think, for VRCs throughout, for every college campus. So that's what the veterans' groups are, sort of their goal for this year. And so we talked about that in D.C. We heard from all of the representatives, and of course, since the DACA issue was weighing on everybody's minds, we had some good conversations with representatives. So one of the things that we did tell them, and CCLC is doing this, is they're collecting all of the letters, so any letters or resolutions that any of the colleges pass, send them over to them, and they're keeping a repository, and we're sending that link to our representatives. Also, if you know of incidents where any of our students are impacted by some of these new mandates, to send that to our representatives. So I also had the privilege of flying back to L.A. with the Latino Caucus, and you may have seen that the Latino Caucus was turned away from the press conference, so they were riding home with us. And they talked about the issues that they're trying to address, and so they asked us also to send documentation of any of our students that are impacted, and they're keeping logs of that. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. I've just got a couple of things to mention. One is, for anybody who doesn't regularly go over to the art galleries that we have on this campus, you're missing a real treat, and I urge you to get over there, particularly over in the Boone Gallery. I was there a couple of days ago. I don't know if it was fully set up.
No.
Oh, okay.
Probably when you were there, it was not fully set up.
Okay, well.
Is no.
What I saw was great, and, well, it's art, so I urge you to go over there and enjoy it, both galleries. I want to extend my congratulations to Dr. Verdi and the whole staff, and everybody in this college that worked so hard for a year and a half, I think. Yeah, a year and a half between the initial visit by the Accreditation Commission and when they had their follow-up meeting, and we seemed to have, excuse me, done what we needed to, and I really appreciate it and stand the congratulations and gratitude from the entire board. One of the first committee meetings I attended as a trustee a few years back, I noticed there was a member of the public that actually came to the committee meeting. These are public meetings. You don't usually have members of the public coming to them, but there was this elegant lady sitting back there, I think this was in the president's conference room, and after the meeting, I went over to introduce myself, and it was indeed Shirley Burt. And, you know, we had a great conversation, a really long-term supporter of PCC through the foundation, and, you know, we were all saddened to hear of her passing. We will be adjourning the meeting tonight in her honor. Now, Bobby, do you want to say a few words?
Would we do that when we adjourn the meeting?
We're not adjourning.
Oh, oh, excuse me. Oh. Well, actually, we're going to have a brief follow-up additional closed session, so I wouldn't want people to hang around here. Right now, are there any future board business meeting dates, comments that people have? We have the latest calendar in this folder.
So our next meeting is not the 15th, but the 22nd, correct?
Yes.
And I just don't remember, did we ever officially move that, or do we need to officially move that?
We did that because we were all going to Washington for the Aspen.
Right. Okay. And I remember that, I just didn't remember if we officially voted.
We had moved. And before we move, I was going to ask if it would be the board's pleasure to have the meeting of July 19th moved to the following week, July 26th. As that would give staff some time for, so that they can take at least a two-week vacation in between, because otherwise, they will have to come back after a week or 10 days to prepare for the board agenda for the July 19th meeting.
July 19th or April 19th?
July 19th.
July 19th.
This is shown on the proposed calendar in the folder.
If you look at the folder, we have shown you that, and if it is the pleasure of the board, the staff would appreciate it.
Do we vote? What do we do?
You will have to make a motion, and then we'll vote.
I would so move. Second.
I'm looking.
Any discussion?
Well.
I have a question. Is it correct to call it a regular business meeting, or since we've already designated the 10th as a regular meeting, does this make this a special meeting?
No, it's not a special meeting. It's just that we are moving the date from the 19th to the 26th.
Well, I'm in town on the 19th and probably won't be in town on the 26th.
That's why we changed it.
You might have a really good reason, but let's just.
Don't tell him.
We're going to do a reorganization.
Okay. I can just step out. We can do this quick.
You're on four more committees.
I'm just telling you. There's a really good chance I won't be here.
Is there a motion to move the second meeting in July from the 19th to the 26th? So moved, I think. We had a motion. Advisory vote?
Aye.
Trustees?
Yeah, I'm not voting for this. I won't vote against it, but I can't be here. Why would I vote for this?
Thank you.
The advisory vote is yes.
That's why I get one week vacation, and that's it.
Advisory vote is yes. The vote is five in favor, one abstention, one absence.
On the real meeting.
Doctor Fellow is absent. Mr. Martin is abstaining. Proposed future agenda items.
So I just want to reiterate that I would like to make sure that we have a date to revisit the transit pass and the meeting with, once the supervisors can get in with the MTA. And then also to consider the resolution passed by the Academic Senate and in partnership with students, if the trustees also then review that resolution and consider one our own. So I'd like that for future discussion.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items, suggestions? Okay. Thank you. Now, normally, we would adjourn the meeting at this time, but we're going to go back into closed session briefly. However, so Bobby, would you like to make your remarks this time? Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege to share a few words of tribute to a longtime friend of Pasadena City College and the Pasadena City College Foundation, Shirley Burt. Just two days ago, on February 27th, Shirley would have turned 93 years old. Her life reflects a profile of the kind of student success that we, as a college community, work so hard to facilitate. Shirley was born the same year that PCC was established, 1924. She attended Pasadena Junior College and received her associate's degree in 1943. She went on to get her registered nursing credentials from what was then the Huntington Memorial Hospital Program, which later merged and is now the nursing program at PCC. She received her bachelor's degree in nursing from USC and her master's in nursing from UCLA. To say that she was an accomplished and respected in her field is an understatement. Her career spanned almost 70 years. She served thousands of patients in six local hospitals, but her allegiance to education was singular. PCC ranked highest among her alma maters for her dedication to service. She was an active member of the PCC Parent-Teacher-Student Association since 1961, and served on the Foundation Board for 17 years, and most recently completed her term on the Measure P Committee. In 2011, PCC honored Shirley Burt at commencement with their special community recognition award, citing her loyal, dedicated service to the college and its students. Many times, she was the only Foundation Board member that would be in regular attendance right here at these Board of Trustees meetings. On a personal note, Shirley Burt was my mentor. She served on my interview committee in 2011 when I was hired, and we quickly became friends. She was beloved on the Foundation Board, and many of her colleagues on the board had known her and her husband Gene for almost 50 years. So as friends go, Shirley and I were new friends. If you had ever sat in a board meeting or Measure P Committee meeting with Shirley, you would know that she was not shy about sharing her opinion, asking a question, or sharing a story about a previous experience that she would have had that was about the very topic you were discussing. Her thoughts were always direct and on point. You could always count on Shirley to ask the question, "How is this going to affect the students?" When serving on the Foundation Scholarship Committee, she was relentless in making sure that our scholarships were large enough to make a difference. If a scholarship had been too small of an amount, or if a scholarship had too small an amount available to award, she would insist that we combine it with another scholarship so that our students could feel the impact of our work, and that our help was real help and not just symbolic. Faculty members may not know that Shirley was one of your best advocates, especially with the Foundation Board. As a volunteer community member, the Foundation Board members could always count on Shirley to give a temperature check on how things might affect the faculty. Shirley always sat directly to my left in our executive committee meetings. My appreciation for her spry, quick response, forward-thinking, boundless energy was second to none. It did not surprise me when I learned that her recovery after she had been hospitalized around the Thanksgiving holiday was going better than expected, and that her convalescing was going faster than anticipated, and that she was recovering at home with a friend. And I expected her to be at our board meeting on March 21st. But then I got a call, and I knew that she would not be there. I had visited her twice during her illness, and she insisted each time that I bring her up to date and wanted it happened at our most recent executive committee meetings. And she would lament about how the young nurses weren't doing things quite the way that she would have done them, and she said she had a lot of teaching moments with those who were taking care of her. I, for one, would not ever want to be responsible for taking care of a patient who had had over 70 years of nursing experience. I had just given a good report on her recovery to the Foundation Executive Committee a few days before I received the call that she had passed away on February 13th. So while she was almost 93, her death was still a shock to all of us. The loss of her leadership, advocacy, and input will be greatly missed on this campus, but an even greater loss will be felt in our hearts, as we will miss her friendship, her smile, her unrelenting love for our campus community, but most of all, her love for our students. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Bobby. The board will now reconvene in closed session. The board will now reconvene in closed session.